Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's December 13th Committee of the Whole. We do have three items on the agenda this evening, and there are no signatures on the sign-in sheet. However, if there were, we would open the floor for 20 minutes, allowing each speaker to speak their case for five minutes, and they would be able to speak specifically about the matters that are on this evening's agenda. But since that's not the case, we'll go ahead and dive right in. And we'll start with the first item, which is the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency Deductible Level Discussion, and this will be handled by Manager Sabo and Finance Director Talking Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. On the, a brief presentation for you this evening, within the agenda packet is a recommendation from staff to modify the city's deductible amount with IRMA, which is the city's, it's the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency that provides the city's liability, workers' comp, various liability insurance coverage for the year of 2023. The city historically has been at a $2,500 deductible level. However, based on our historic claims analysis and the financial income and statements coming into 2023, we see that there is a potential to save money over the course of a 10-year period comparative to a $2,500 deductible. In addition, we're seeking council's direction this evening to, as we did in 2022, use the city's excess surplus credit on account with IRMA to pay for the 2023 premium. So I've put the questions up there just so the council knows what direction we're seeking, and I'll provide a couple of quick overview comments. This is the preliminary statement that was sent to the city for 2023 from IRMA, and I'll run through the different lines real quickly just to understand how we come to the numbers that are on there. IRMA uses a
Excuse me?
A calculation methodology. Pardon me? All right, let's start over there. IRMA uses a calculation methodology that is based on the city's average revenue base over a five-year term. Based on that amount, they then apply a plus or minus experience modifier, which is dependent on the city's history in loss claims, or it would be a positive if we've had a history that is unfavorable. Based on the history of the city, we have had a favorable, thank you, we've had a favorable history, which represents a loss modifier credit in the amount of $492,175. Thereafter, that arrives to the 2023 contribution before there's an optional deductible credit that's applied against the premium. As you can see on the preliminary statement, historically, the credit for a $2,500 deductible is zero. Similar to your personal or home insurance or business insurance, the higher your deductible, the lower your premiums. In our case, the city has been holding its deductible amount at its lowest level, resulting in the city historically paying the highest amount of premium contributions on an annual basis. So the total annual contribution, if we were to remain at the 2022 amount of $2,500, the deductible level, we would be paying a $677,028 annual contribution amount. I'd like to draw the council's attention to the bottom three lines as well, which relates to the city's excess surplus credit amounts, which again is the dollar amount on hand with IRMA based on the investment returns from funds that remain on account with IRMA. The preliminary investment income credit that is owed to the city, and this is preliminary at this time, is $360,369 based on returns from the 2022 calendar year. With that $360,000 plus amount credit, that would bring our excess surplus amount at the end of 2022 to $2,816,369. This chart, which is taken out of the agenda packet, represents the amount of savings the city potentially could have, or the city could have received if we had a $10,000 deductible level from 2011 through 2020 over a 10-year period, as well as a $25,000 deductible level. Staff at this time is recommending that we move to a $10,000 deductible level. The deductibles can be changed on an annual basis. So each year, we can continue to revisit this question, evaluate how our loss runs have been, and come back to the council with a recommendation to maintain our $10,000, to go down to 2,500, or to go up. Ideally, our goal is to try to get to $25,000 deductible. As you can see on the chart, the potential for savings is higher. However, the higher the deductible amount, the higher your swings will be either to the positive or to the negative. That said, if you look at the negative column, the amounts that are in the negative on the negative years are amounts that we would be able to cover with our balance within the excess surplus credit at IRMA, or with the liability insurance fund money that we have on account here at the city. In summary, if the city does change our deductible amount for 2023 to 10,000, the city's premium payment will be reduced through a credit by 9% from $677,028 to $616,095, resulting in a premium savings of $60,933. In order to maintain a favorable loss history, our current policy, and it will remain our current policy, is to maintain low claim volumes, and that's done through training and working with our staff to prevent, to prevent preventable accidents. And so by maintaining lower accident volumes, injuries, things of that nature, we in the end can see a credit at the end of the year, in other words, savings versus paying more at the $2,500 deductible amount. Additionally, I just noted on here, if the city does elect to pay the 2023 IRMA premium using the excess credit, that would result in a remaining credit available at $2,202,74, and that's assuming the $10,000 deductible for 2023. So returning back to the original question that was posed to the council and the direction we're seeking this evening, as mentioned, staff is recommending a change for 2023 to the $10,000 deductible amount in order to achieve a premium credit, and also staff is recommending and seeking council concurrence to apply the city's excess surplus on hand at IRMA to pay the 2023 premium. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. I'll open up the floor for questions, comments, or concerns. And Manager, Alderman Budmats, do you have a question for Manager Sabo?
I do. What would our savings credit be if we chose a $25,000 deductible rather than the $10,000 deductible?
I can tell you that right now. Sorry. So the credit amount would be 20%, which, let me give you a quick calculation here. I'll go back to the numbers, so 677,028 times 0.2. So about $135,405 on the, on the, excuse me, the premium amount.
So, and I'm assuming that any claims that we would have to pay the deductible of $25,000 out of, would also come out of our existing $2 million credit that's sitting there?
That's correct.
So why wouldn't we just roll the dice and go to a $25,000? Because it's not really going to be coming out of city funds. At this point, it's coming out of a credit that's sitting there that we haven't used.
Correct. Yeah, the potential for savings, as the chart represents, does show a higher potential return over the course of a longer period of time. And again, yeah, we can cover that through the excess credit on account.
We could be our own insurance company.
We could.
In theory.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you. So I applaud staff in finding another way of, you know, saving taxpayers some money. This was just another example of you guys looking at ways to, to, you know, come up with money. And I agree with Alderman Budmats that that was my first initial thinking was why not just do 25,000 if we already have the credits in there? But you had said something about because the swing can be different, so can you explain that just a little bit?
Sure. So if you take a look at the chart under the $25,000 deductible amount, for example, if you look at the 2015 claim year, under the 10,000 deductible amount, your difference for that year, given that that was a year with a higher amount of losses, was $16,218 under 10,000, under the $10,000 deductible. If you go over to $25,000 deductible, that amount changes and increases to $56,594. Now, also, if you look at the 2020 claim year, the swings are also in the opposite direction as well. So when you have a favorable claim year in 2020 under 10,000, we would have had 57,000 in savings. However, if we were at 25,000 deductible, we would be at $121,000 in savings. So that's what I mean by the swings are a little bit broader and wider than if you're at a $10,000 deductible. Now, all things considered, a $25,000 deductible, ideally, knock on wood, I do not plan that we are going to have a bad claim year. But if you do, you potentially have the exposure to a higher amount that you're paying on the per deductible basis. However, again, the history and our current trends are reflective of a favorable loss history. And so I think that our funds on hand for this account would be able to cover the swings both to the positive and to the negative. And again, over a 10-year, 10-year term, we should be expecting to save money versus paying money, and it'd be a savings larger than the $10,000 deductible amount.
Manager Sabo, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on that. The other part of it is any prior year, so there are deductibles to 2,500, those claims remain under the 2,500, so we could go to the 25,000 in the 2023 year. Hopefully, nothing, you know, happens, but if we did have a bad claim year, then the next year, we go back down to the 2,500. Only the claims in 2023 can be under the 25,000. So that opportunity to look at your deductible each year does help. So if we feel like we went through 23, it was too much, we, you know, drew down too far on the reserves in this fund, we can then adjust the deductible for the 2024 year. So there is some flexibility in kind of adjusting in the following year based on what you saw in the current year.
Alderman Zunica?
Thank you. I just wanted to have a follow-up then with our finance director. If that were to be the case, and it doesn't seem like we would necessarily benefit from this longer-term approach, if we're saying one year that we go for the $25,000 deductible, and then if we had a bad claim year, then the following year, we decide, no, let's go back to the 2,000, or to the 2,000, or the 10,000, the 2,500, we've, I suppose if we go back to the 10,000, then that's, we would still gain a long-term gain, but if we were to move back to that 2,500, then this, this becomes moot, right?
Right. Ideally, shifting to 10,000 or 25,000 is really for the longer term. Now's the time, kind of in our discussions on why we're looking at this, is not only do you have the excess reserve that Manager Sabo went over, we also have $1 million in fund balance in that fund. So if you're going to kind of be less risk averse in this fund, the year where you have kind of that funding set aside that you can draw into if something were to occur, it gives us kind of that cushion to make that change, but realistically, looking at this, I do think the city should sit at 10,000 or 25,000 for a longer term. 2,500 is very conservative, and with our claim history, even if we have one bad year, it, you know, even over the term that you see here, it looks like, you know, we do much better in the following year. So we've been able to control or put efforts in place to prevent things from happening. So we, we haven't been a high-risk community when we're looking at these.
And I would say, you know, looking at our historic data, I think that's probably true, even if we were to go to the 25,000, my concern is, will the council be able to make that decision if we have not one, I'm looking at 2014 and 2015, if we were to see losses of $30,000 and $56,000 consecutively, and then 919 losses the next year, would the council have the fortitude to be able to stick with a plan of 10 years to be able to gain the $248,000? I just, I just don't see, I just don't think that I have that much confidence in being able to continue along that trajectory, whereas the 10,000, if we saw 13,000 and 16,000, then perhaps that could move forward. But with that $1 million, I mean, what, what could, this is historic data, if we had something that was much worse than this, so if we were to double that, perhaps, I
Right. So that's why I think kind of right now, you're in an ideal position to look at it, because you also have, you know, depending on the direction on to spend against the excess reserve, we do have funding in that kind of bucket. So you have the fund balance, a million dollars, plus you have the over $2 million in the excess reserve right now, which could get you through in either scenario, two or more years where we might take losses. And so you're in a good position to say, we're going to look at this for a 10-year period versus a one-year period, because you have those kind of cushions to use right now.
So, and that's what I want to make sure that the council understands tonight, is that the reason that $10,000 is being preferred from staff is because that's something that we could commit to for 10 years, given that cushion?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Zunica. Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you. So I know that 2021 data isn't up there, and I'm assuming available yet, but we know as a council that we had claims against IRMA this year that were substantial. So I'm hoping that we took advantage of that, being that our deductible was only the 2,500 this year, and so that's why I'm still comfortable moving forward, knowing that the council doesn't anticipate any lawsuits like we, you know, sustained this year, to go forward with the 25,000. Because again, even going through the processes that we went through this year, we still had the money in our reserves and in that credit account in the IRMA to cover those losses.
And to add to that, the claim year is based on when the claim begins, so those actually occurred in your 2020 results. So the majority of that specific claim is already showing in these figures.
Thank you. Alderman Budmats, another question?
Two questions. How many claims have we had to date in 2022?
Let me see if I can pull that data for you real quick. Bear with me.
And then second thing, based on our experience modifier, we're already getting a 40% credit, which shows that we already, I mean, further proof that we're a good risk. So if that number were to change, then we could think about changing, if we drop to a 25% credit or something on our experience modifier, that would be the time to go back to 10,000 or something?
Correct. And that's why I think it's nice that we can look at the deductible every year. I mean, the plan would be to try to keep it for the 10 years and see that if we generate the savings, which, you know, we could have possibly over those 10 years, but like I said, if there's something that occurs or something throws us where we're not continuing the same trend that we've had, we can always adjust the deductible during one of those years if we need to.
It looks like they had a really decent return on their investments as well in a down year, so, I mean, we should keep some cash there.
That's true. So that would be that additional $360,000 that Manager Sabo talked about, so that will add to our excess surplus. I would say they'll probably feel the effects of the economy in the next year, so we probably won't have that much more added to our excess reserve in the next year, but it was beneficial that we did have some of that and saw good claims available to capture additional funding in our plan.
It appears that we've had 38 total claims this year, and those are a range between workers' compensation claims, so injuries, those types of claims.
So workman's comp falls into this same?
Okay, yes. Our loss runs for this year are primarily workman's comp related, and the loss amounts primarily, you know, depending on the type of injury, so an ACL tear, for instance, the claims can go up, and as an individual visits a doctor and continues to be treated, those claims will continue to count against the 2022 year.
Right.
So for instance, you know, one individual had about $132,000 in total expenditures through workers' comp. The amount in the deductible that was paid for that was 2,500. So that's where, you know, the cushions work out, and ideally, given the line of work, you know, and we talked about this with the executive director of IRMA, every community out there will have a series of, let me rephrase it, the good communities out there have a favorable loss history. Every about seven years, we'll, we'll have some major claim, and given the line of work that we do as a municipality between police, fire, public works, it's not inevitable. And so that said, for the most part, through, as I mentioned earlier, continued training and safety, reinforcing of safety protocols and best practices, as well as IRMA comes in and does occasional inspections of our, of our facilities and our operations, I think that our command staff, our management staff really embraces the fact that safety is paramount to our operation.
Anything further? Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
This is probably just more of a confirmation. This is a per-claim deductible, not an annual deductible, correct? Just based on your last example?
That's, that's
So we had 38 times the 25, I mean, that obviously would be one of the down years, but it's not an annual, like, I'm acquainted to homeownership or whatever it was, is that you need a new roof, but it's a 5,000, obviously, the company's probably going to boot you the next time, because that's, so it's a per-claim one, not an annual deductible.
Correct. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on this subject? Okay. If not, then I think first, let's have a show of hands of all those in favor of increasing our deductible, or taking it to the next level, I should say, those in favor of that. And then let's start with staff's recommendation per this page of $10,000. Those in favor of adjusting the level to 10,000? Okay, that's one. And those opposed to the 10,000, just for right now, just to balance out the yays and nays. And then for Alderman Budmats' suggestion of a $25,000 level adjustment, those in favor? Okay, that's five. And then those opposed for 25,000? You can abstain. Neither yay nor nay. All right. Well, I think that settles that in terms of direction for adjusting the level. And then the next question was utilizing the reserves that exist now to pay the 2023 premium. So those in favor of staff and the city doing that, show their hands. That's one, two, three, four, five. And those opposed to using the reserves? Okay, that's one. So it looks like you got clear direction on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That'll conclude that subject, and we'll move on to our second item, where we'll call Elizabeth up here to talk about the NRGov Citizen Self-Service Portal, and she'll provide us a demonstration, along with presentation. Elizabeth?
Good evening, Mary Gallo. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, thanks very much for having me this evening. I'm very excited to come here today, tonight, and talk to you about a project that has kind of been a combination of a lot of group efforts between myself, CIO Khan, Assistant Director Charlton, and then a few others before that. It's been a long project coming, and I'm excited to share with you some of the exciting things that we are looking to share with our residents, our businesses, our contractors. Please hold for technical difficulties.
Listen to the word, if I plug in and open it from here. Can't see the hot dog flipping, you know? At the drive-in, like between films, they would have, like
Before his time.
Sorry.
Before his
I just don't know what this is.
After
I don't know why. I don't know.
At the end, the hot dog jumped in the
Maybe my ten dollars
You knew right
Which stage yourself.
Okay.
I don't think there's any opening
Yeah, I can tell you right here.
They're all good.
I don't want to be extra, but
Well, John, you were going to make it on time.
There we go. All right. All right. Stand your camera. All right.
And we're back. Thanks for your patience. I appreciate it. Once again, the software system that we are implementing for community development is called NRGov, and I'm here to share with you the Citizen Self-Service Portal, which will be our public-facing side of NRGov. Yay, the clicker works. So just a little bit of history, we signed the contract with Tyler for the citywide ERP system way back in 2017, and we started building NRGov in 2019. So we've been hard at work for the last three years. to share with you the Citizen Self-Service Portal, which will be our public-facing side of EnterGov. Yay, the clicker works. So just a little bit of history. We signed the contract with Tyler for the citywide ERP system way back in 2017, and we started building EnterGov in 2019. So we've been hard at work for the last three years. In 2021, we were updated to the latest version of EnterGov, which required a little bit of relearning on my part because it did look very, very different. But I think it's a much more user-friendly look to it now than it had before. EnterGov is going to increase a lot of efficiencies within community development. One thing that it does is track permits from initial entry all the way to final inspection. It also allows for better data collection than our current legacy software system does, which will help, obviously, City Council make decisions about the direction of community development. This portal and the software system also provide for direct citizen engagement. People will be able to log in and see the status of their permits, see due dates, request inspections, apply for certain things as well. We're going to start off with some things, and then eventually we'll be able to accept online permit and plans and middles. So as part of the Citizen Self-Service Portal, residents, businesses, contractors, developers, all of the above will be able to create accounts. Those accounts are tied to an email address, which we then, which is then imported as well into EnterGov. And as long as they're using the same email address, they'll be able to follow the status of their zoning entitlements, their permits, their plan reviews, their license requests, as well as see some of the history associated with it. One of the nice things about EnterGov as opposed to our current legacy software system is that we can attach more than one contact to each type of permit. So everyone who's involved in the permit, from the homeowner to the contractor to whoever else wants to be notified, can be notified all at the same time. When the public first signs on to our Citizen Self-Service Portal, this is the screen that they'll see. We tried to make it as simple and user-friendly as possible. The three buttons, just in case you can't read it, I understand it's kind of small, sorry about that, are login or register, where they can log into their account or create a new one, apply, where they'll be able to apply for any case types that we have available online, and request inspection. So if they have an open case with us, they can request an inspection through this system. When they go to apply, our application assistant will be opened. They'll be able to see a listing of all types of applications that they can have through the system. You can, they'll be able to list it through all. They'll be able to drill down between licenses, permits, and what here is called plans, and what we'll generally refer to as zoning entitlements, so special uses, plan developments, that kind of thing. They'll also be able to see what's trending, so the more popular types of applications that are being accessed through the system, as well as their history of applications for licenses, permits, all of that. So I just wanted to step through a little bit what the screens will look like as someone is going through the process of applying for a permit. In this case, I did, excuse me, I did select a very basic kind of permit residential fence application. The permit type, once you choose it, is locked in. The description is required, so this is where you'd put in and tell us a little bit more about your project. In this case, since it's a residential fence, something as simple as a six-foot cedar fence is perfectly acceptable to include. Applicants can put in as much or as little information as they see fit. Also attached here is the square foot evaluation, but it's not going to be required on this screen, especially because square feet is not applicable to this type of permit. The applicant will also be able to add in certain types of contract, or excuse me, contacts. There are certain types of contacts that are required, the applicant, the owner, and in this case, also the fence contractor, because obviously, community development needs to know who's doing your work. You can add in additional contacts as needed. The system also allows for users to search for existing contacts. So if you're the applicant applying on behalf of your neighbor, and you know that the neighbor already has an account, you can search for the neighbor. You can search for your contractor. It also gives the ability to add in a contact if one doesn't already exist. On this screen, it's called more information. These are the custom fields that we have built into the system and programmed in. This will give community development additional information that it needs to complete whatever review. In this case, things like the length of the fence, the height of the fence, the depth of the post holes. These are all vital pieces of information to let our inspectors and plan reviewers know if the, if what's being requested is code compliant. I don't have a separate screen for it, but there is also a screen to add in any attachments that you'd like the community development department to see. On certain types of applications, there are required submittals. So for example, on a fence permit, you would be required to provide a copy of your marked-up plot of survey and a copy of the contract with the contractor. In some cases, a homeowner's association approval may be required. That can also be uploaded on this screen. Once the application is completed, we have a message screen that lets the user know that community development has received their application and will be contacting them with any updates about it. This is updated in real time. So as soon as it's completely entered into the system by the user, it shows up in the staff version of the software. Once the application is completed, this screen is immediately available. It provides some information, summary of what the applicant has provided to us. Things like the location, the, any attachments can be seen, modified, added to. And it also gives a little bit of insight into the community development process. There's the progress bar, circle, pi, whatever you want to call it, there that is kind of like a snapshot view of where community development is at in the process. And then there's a little bit more of a drill down there into specifically what steps community development goes through in order to review and hopefully approve your permit. This is a little bit more in-depth. I wanted to show something very specific here. You can see once again that the pie chart on the left-hand side has started being filled, indicating a completion percent and indicating what is still in process. The workflow on, in the middle there has also been modified. I don't know if you can see it, but the fifth step there says building review residential, indicating that the permit application has been submitted for review to our reviewing professionals. What is there that I think a lot of contractors, business owners, and homeowners would like to see is it also provides the scheduled due date for that review. So homeowners, contractors, businesses will be able to log into their portal, see what applications they have open, as well as see what step it's on, what we're waiting for, if we're waiting for anything, and also see when we are due to give them back comments, information, additional. Once the review is completed, everything's approved, we do have the ability to allow the user to pay for their permit, license, zoning entitlement online. They can pay by a credit card directly through the portal, which will then get uploaded into Tyler Cashier and through the finance department. In addition to all of those wonderful things, you can also request inspections specifically through our Citizen Self-Service Portal. This information gets directly to community development. As soon as you enter it, we see the request. It's not like it's coming in through email, where if it's a busy day for phones, maybe we don't see it till towards the end of the day. In this case, it also lists out all of the required inspections for this particular type of permit, so that whoever is our applicants know upfront when community development will be coming out and what we'll be looking for. So in this case, the case of a residential fence permit, the post hole inspection is the first one, and it's the only one that they can ask for at this time. Our workflow is built such that you have to have one approved before you can get to the other. So you can't request the final without the rough. Applicants and users will also be able to see the inspections that they have requested. They can also see the status of when community development schedules them and puts them into the specific inspection calendar. The business licensing, rental license processes are both very similar. They go through those same steps, documentation. What I wanted to show here was a little bit of the different kinds of questions that we ask for a business license. For example, we do ask for total number of parking spaces on site, which helps with the zoning review to ensure that parking and traffic flow are acceptable for the site for the new use. We also have the additional types of uses accessory to the primary use that can be selected. So for example, vending machines, outdoor seating, that can be requested at the same time as the business license, and it will alert community development to include that in the review. And then once again, there's the screen that the, excuse me, that the user sees once the application submittal is completed. Once again, it shows the status and where everything is at. So what's next for EnterGov and for the Citizen Self-Service Portal? My team is finishing up the testing process right now, and data conversion is ongoing. We've been working on that for the past couple of months. We've gotten a couple of passes through. The idea is that all of the data from our legacy systems, going all the way back to the year 2000, will be converted into EnterGov, so that the history will be available for staff as well as for any users that might be interested in looking it up. Our go-live date at this time is January 3rd. So our software system will be fully live and fully functional on January 3rd, which does include the Citizen Self-Service Portal. So residents, contractors, and businesses can look forward to January 3rd. Up front, we will allow for a few new things, actually. In addition to the business and rental license renewal process that we allow on our current website, users will be able to apply for new business licenses, apply for new rental licenses, and apply for zoning relief. That will all be able to be done through the Citizen Self-Service Portal the minute it goes live on January 3rd. Over the next few months, my staff will be evaluating the software system, catching any bugs, catching any glitches, fixing the small hiccups that you expect with a new software system. In addition, the team will be getting more proficient and more comfortable in the software to ensure that it's being used to the best possible ability. In the future, we're starting out with not really allowing permits to be applied for online to give our staff a little bit of time to get used to the system, give the community a little bit of time to get used to the system, to make sure that there's no hiccups between the online submittal and between the internal staff processing. Once we've been using the system for a little bit, we're going to gradually start including permit processing as an online request, starting with over-the-counter permits, such as windows, doors, siding, roofing, and then gradually increasing to smaller types of permits, like patios, decks, sheds, driveways, those kinds of things that require a smaller review. Eventually, the goal is to accept all kinds of permits through the system, but that will take a little bit of time. I am happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Thank you for the presentation, Elizabeth. Honestly, looking forward to this, this manner of interaction between permit applicants or contractors, developers, and community development department. When you mentioned that, I like the dashboard aspect, and if plan review has punchless items, are those punchless items entered in the platform, and then the applicant has access to those punchless items in the dashboard? Or do they get them received via email, or is there a notification that says you have reviewed punchless items in your, in your portal?
Excellent question. Yes, it is my intention that plan review items, as well as inspection results, be made available through this portal as well. Anything that we choose to have available online through this portal, through the main software system, is available online. So the fact that they can request inspections is something that we have chosen. In addition, we'll have the inspection results available. We'll have the plan review comments available. At least to start with, we'll probably do dual notifications until our contractors get used to, okay, well, I've got an email that says I have comments, let me pop in there. We'll probably let them know as well, and have other versions of the comments available for them to look, to look at.
Perfect. And then will the contractor be able to submit their responses to those items in the portal, or will they have to be conventionally how it's done now, either in person or attached via email?
My intention is to keep the processes the same until we grow it. So once we do the over-the-counter permits, you can do that completely online, including downloading and printing your permit. Once we grow into the smaller permit applications, like the fences, the decks, the sheds, yes, they will be able to do any resubmittals that are required completely through the self-service portal.
Nice. Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Bessesi, then, Seneca?
When this initially goes live, will there be standard reporting for yourself and maybe council to be able to see how our efficiencies are getting better and everything like that? What's the average time of permits, that type of stuff?
Yes. I think, that's an excellent question. I think that at first, we're going to see some of those times go down a little bit, just because we're getting used to the system. But one of the things that I really do like about EnterGov and about the Citizen Self-Service Portal is that that information is so much easier to access, so much easier to find, so much easier to pull out of the system than it is in our legacy software. So yes, our reporting will be much easier.
Okay, you'll also be, will you also be able to see, I don't know how often you would run it, but be able to get some sort of an exception reporting for, okay, hey, we missed this date, hey, we missed this date, type of thing?
I would, I would presume that I could, I could find a way to run that as well. Because that, that information, all of that information is going to be in EnterGov. It's just a matter of learning how to pull it out. Some of it is going to be a little bit easier to pull than others, but I'm confident that we can pull any kind of report that we need to.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're meeting the expectations that were set when they initially submitted everything. If they go in and they look and they say, oh, it's going to be done on the 5th.
Yeah. The other, the other nice thing about EnterGov is not only can I pull that report, but I do get notified. Something goes past the due date.
Whatever threshold.
Exactly. The reviewer, and I believe myself, are set to be notified, like, hey, nudge, nudge, you have a review due.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Seneca?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I have more of, kind of an in-the-weeds operations question about the database management. So I know earlier you were saying that you want the team to be used to the software and the process. Do we have someone from Tyler Technologies who would help with database management, or is that all going to be us internally? And I can give an example. So like, one of the ones you had here was, you can, the user can enter in additional contacts. And if, if someone, for example, is entering duplicates for a duplicate contractor, duplicate person or item in that, is there anyone who would be sweeping that or cleaning it up or checking to see, I guess, you have a database of database management?
Yeah. Excellent question. For the most part, EnterGov is smart. So if somebody starts to enter information that's already in there and then hits the submit button, they'll be like, hey, there's, there's this one. So I'm not anticipating so much overlap as there is in our current legacy software system.
Can I add one comment? So within the IT department, we're also in the process of recruiting for a data analyst position, which would be in charge of oversight of the ERP data system. So there's a saying in these, in ERP, we're garbage in, garbage out. And so the data management's really important to us. Part of that is what took us a little while to get all the components of EnterGov up and running, so that we had all the information into the system, so it was functional from day one. That data analyst position will be looking at our databases and managing that information as well.
Is there any support then for that data analyst currently, or is it solely housed with community development right now?
Currently, data is being managed between myself and CIO Con.
Okay.
We haven't made the hire yet for the data analyst position.
Okay. And then my other question is about communicating the rollout. So I know that we're talking about having dual systems that are concurrent in order to have contractors get used to the system. Is there any communication that we have right now to anticipate, January 3rd's, you know, three weeks away from here?
Coming up.
Oh, it's coming up. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're working, yeah, we're working on the communications. So our intention is to put it on full blast. We'll probably put together a press release just identifying if it isn't picked up from tonight's meeting, that we're moving forward with this new software rollout. But in addition to that, through the city's newsletters, social media, and pretty much all avenues that we can go about, we'll try to get the word out as broadly and widely as we can.
I just want to add a little bit to Manager Sabo's comments there. I've already started working with Lori Sezak on the messaging, so we're going to go, as Manager Sabo said, full blast. It's going on the website. It's going on the marquee, if I can get it there. Anywhere that I can get the word out, I intend to. We've already started that a little bit. I've got flyers up at the community development windows. I've got flyers out for people to take with them. In addition to that, Lori is working with me to put an insert into the upcoming water bill, just to get that information out there to anyone who gets a water bill.
And, well, so do residents or any users of...
all avenues that we can go about, we'll try to get the word out as broadly and widely as we can.
I just want to add a little bit to Magna Rissabo's comments there. I've already started working with Lori Czak on the messaging, so we're going to go, as Magna Rissabo said, full blast. It's going on the website. It's going on the marquee, if I can get it there. Anywhere that I can get the word out, I intend to. We've already started that a little bit. I've got flyers up at the community development windows. I've got flyers out for people to take with them. In addition to that, Lori is working with me to put an insert into the upcoming water bill, just to get that information out there to anyone who gets a water bill.
Well, so, do residents or any users of the dashboard, will they be able to have any training outside of looking back on the minutes for the December 13th committee of the whole?
Certainly. Community development is always available for calls. We're happy to talk to anybody. This is kind of my pet project, has been something I've been working on for three years and I'm very proud of, and I'm looking forward to sharing with everybody and everybody. So, if there's anyone that has questions, needs a little bit of guidance, I'm more than happy to make an appointment with them and walk them through what they need to see.
Yeah, and I have no doubt. I think what I would like to see is maybe something that can be accessed offline, outside of this committee of the whole meeting, to have kind of an example to say, "Hey, here's how you can go through the process," and whether that's a video that we can put on the city's YouTube or somewhere else on the website that's just accessible. So, that way, even if community development is closed, then that can still be accessed and business can continue during other hours as well.
And I would put that on Tyler Technologies, that they have a demo that we could have for that registration process to access a portal as a new registrant.
Absolutely. We can absolutely talk to Tyler about that. To your point, Alderman, Sanuika, Lori and I have also been talking about making those how-to videos and putting them on the website. Lori has been absolutely amazing in trying to put together our message to get out there. And she did a lot of research into how other communities have handled their implementation and that message. One of the things that she saw that she liked best was, and I agree, is how-to videos that are directly on the community development page for the respective community. So, most likely, we'll add in a link to this committee of the whole meeting so that people can kind of see that. But it is also my intention to make more specific how-to videos.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Sanuika. Alderman Veneziano, Ben O'Brien.
Thank you. So, I have two questions. On the part where you, after you had submitted, like, the information for a permit and then it was for attachments, is there, so say I throw it out there, a fence, is there going to be, like, items that you would have to attach for that permit? So, you know, with me being no idea what I'm doing, it's going to say, "You need to submit X, Y, Z?"
Yes.
Okay. And then, my last comment was going to be that, one of the things that council has really longed for is feedback from our residents on community development, the process, their overall experience. And we've been told, you know, this has been a really hard project to get. You know, we've handed out survey cards. They really haven't gotten them back. So, is any part of that integrated into this new platform?
Not that I'm currently aware of.
Okay.
There are certainly, I'm sure, ways of putting out there that we want feedback, especially for something that's so new. We'd have to consider how to do that.
So, that's something that I know is important to me, and I think as the council, that is something that we've really wanted. I don't know if that's to Tyler to do, but after their whole process, they get an email, whatever it may be, that they give us their feedback. Maybe this whole system is terrible. Maybe it's God's gift to us. I don't know. But we need that feedback. The data is great, but what the residents and contractors say, you know, is really helpful.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, that's a very good point. And I think Tyler Technologies could provide a customer experience pop-up within there, or you can access it on the side and have three or four of the common questions that we typically already submit to the applicants and just import that into here.
And even if they can, as we're talking, I have gears rolling in the back of my head. There's ways that I can program that into the system as well. Maybe not as a pop-up, but when a permit is changed from issued to final, it generates an email with a link to a survey, "Please give us feedback on our new system." So, that's definitely something we can talk about internally as to how to solicit that feedback from new users.
Absolutely. And, you know, you go over those questions, you know, maybe it's one of the builders saying, you know, "Our new codes are really hard to follow. There's something that we've done as a council," or maybe our fees are too high, or maybe they're right in line with other communities. It could be, you know, several different things on their feedback, maybe not just the platform, you know, but that feedback is extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman O'Brien?
Nope. That was exactly what I had, was about the feedback loop, because I know we've had a lot of discussion on that.
Yeah. No, thank you. And it is a common module to incorporate. Any other questions or comments on this? Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to seeing this come live on January 3rd.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Yep. So, move us on to the third and final item, which is the Plan Review Process. And for this, we'll welcome Joel up to the podium. Joel.
Good evening. Thank you very much to focus on community development tonight. Tonight, I wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Elizabeth has been talking about and focus on the community development plan review process. So, this is primarily the entitlement process. So, it would leave out any building permits and the building code types of things and focus on the comprehensive plan zoning entitlement work that we have going on. So, it came up. I know we had a conversation recently about how we spend so much time with our developers and everyone going through this process. And it is a unique process to every individual project that comes through. So, in other words, you know, we've been asked about checklists before, and you can have a checklist generally, but nine times out of 10, you're going to go off-script from that checklist because there's not one checklist that's going to match a project. So, we spend a lot of time with those clients, meeting with them, providing them lists, emailing them. And what we realize is that we've probably not spent a lot of time with you describing that process to our council, because every once in a while, somewhere in a process, somewhere, you'll get a question from somebody and you're not able to answer it because we've not had this conversation with you. So, we thought it was a good opportunity to have a conversation. Uh-oh. What did I do? So, go slideshow from the beginning to the left, top left. There we go. Thank you. Maybe. There we go. So, like any good process, typically starts with an analysis of what do we have, what do we want, and how do we get it? So, in this discussion, our what do we have is our palette. What conditions exist in Rolling Meadows that we are challenged with working with? Some people have greenfield development. Some people have redevelopment opportunities. So, we're going to talk a little bit, and I'll show some pictures about the palette that we work with in Rolling Meadows. Guiding documents is how do, what do we want? So, our comprehensive plan and other documents will come in there, and then I'll talk about the process in a little bit more detail. Starting with our palette, so as you all probably know, this is not what we have in Rolling Meadows. This is a great place I like to travel to on my weekends, about 200 miles south of Chicago. I have worked for over 35 years in communities, some of which are next to cornfields, but I've never had the pleasure of actually applying codes to a cornfield development. So, redevelopment on challenging sites is kind of the specialty that I've developed over the years. We don't have any blank slates in Rolling Meadows. Our palette instead is projects that involve a lot of lot-line to lot-line pavement. So, this is something that, again, as a community that was developed in the '50s, they weren't doing anything wrong at that time. They were complying with the codes that were in place at the time, but, you know, people that were in place and the policies and codes that were in place didn't give the vision that the current comprehensive planning and codes dictate. So, we have a lot of projects that were built in the '50s and haven't changed. And sometimes, we get people coming in to make changes now to those projects. So, we're looking at these as part of our palette. Some of the other conditions that we have, we have the lot-line to lot-line pavement and poor planning for pedestrians. So, you know, we have wide access roadway with pedestrian sidewalks pretty close to that moving traffic. And we also have utility conflicts that are pretty visible in that picture as well. One of the more common issues that I've found in Rolling Meadows on almost every project I've worked with is grading issues. I go to every site and see retaining walls or, you know, drop-offs between parking lots and sidewalks or failing retaining walls and that are kind of eroding into emergency access lanes. So, we deal with this particular condition quite a bit. Another thing, again, kind of getting into properties that were developed in the '50s and '60s and '70s that didn't incorporate parking lot design, we oftentimes will see a parking lot that has very little delineation for the parking spaces or the circulation In some cases, we have uses that were approved for special uses or provided documentation that, yeah, we have adequate parking, you know, and they submit that information. And then, over time, as projects continue to be utilized, we find out they are challenged with our parking. And then, sometimes, we just have the real head-scratcher. You know, this is an instance where you have a back of a commercial building, which, not surprisingly, has the delivery and dumpster refuse screening that you would expect in the back of a store, but why they have striped parking spaces is a little curious to me in that location. And the other, and this is an actual case in Rolling Meadows, the other interesting part of this is those parking spaces are actually on a separate property. So, in this particular case, the back of that store and the location of those dumpsters is on one property and the parking spaces are on another. So, again, kind of looking at the palette that we have, what guides us? The number-one thing that guides us is this thing called a comprehensive plan that, like many other communities, Rolling Meadows has invested in the resources and both in staff and timing and community resources to develop a long-range plan about once every 10 to 15 years. The most recent one was approved in 2020. And it's important because there are a lot of resources that go into it. Not only is it staff time, but council approves contracts with consultants who spend a lot of time working on it and providing us with their expertise. We solicit, great effort into soliciting feedback from residents, from businesses, to provide their vision. What do we want our community to look like? And those policies and plans are generally outlined in that plan. So, this becomes our main guiding document. That document also requested or included a recommendation that we update our codes. So, again, in the '50s, you know, we were growing with automobiles and the codes were very auto-oriented, lots of pavement, lots of places for cars to be, not necessarily looking at some of the pedestrian-oriented type things that we now put more value on today. So, many of the code updates have included those provisions based on the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Other guiding documents include all of our city codes of ordinances. So, in addition to zoning, we also have subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinances. And again, these are found on our city code website. Our fees are also shown in here. And those are the three main sections that we pay attention to, but there's also other sections that include things that we evaluate for drainage and other codes that are outlined in the city code of ordinances. And then, we get to other documents that are outside of our jurisdiction, which we are also required to follow. So, MWRD provides the watershed management ordinance. This is not optional. This is something that we do need to comply with. And when you have lot-line to lot-line pavement, there are criteria that the WMO includes that if you are going to redevelop a site, even if it didn't provide stormwater before, you may be required to provide stormwater now. And that can be very challenging to come up with that space or expensive if you're going to go to an underground system for stormwater control. Other levels of government also get involved. So, in addition to city, we have Cook County. We can have Cook County roadways, township roadways, IDOT roadways. IEP A can sometimes be involved. And then, also, in conjunction with our city legal staff, sometimes we have to pay attention to some of the legal court cases that are involved in advising our applicants as they move through the process. So, now, we're going to talk about the process and how do we decide with all of this information what to focus on? And it's somewhere between, you've got to have it. In other words, the project won't work or it won't get approved without it. And so, these are some of the things that I'll talk about in a little bit. And 100% code compliant. So, what are those must-havings, or they won't work and you can't get approved without it? One of the first things we always look at, particularly if a use is increasing the intensity, is what additional parking that will be required. For built sites, they typically were built at four parking spaces per thousand. As you know, restaurants require more parking spaces at 10 per thousand. So, if we have a mixed-use shopping center that was built at four or five parking spaces per thousand and now we want to, you know, park, we want restaurants. So, now, we want to bring those in, but we need to evaluate parking and whether there's going to be adequate parking on the site. Life safety issues, we oftentimes will take a look at a site, and if we don't have adequate circulation for our current emergency service vehicles to safely maneuver the site and service the site if there were a fire, those are things that we look at pretty closely upfront. Those jurisdictional issues that we don't have any control over, stormwater, county, state roadway requirements, and the IEP A. So, again, somewhere between that and code compliance. But we all know total code compliance is not effective, possible in all situations. It's ideal, but we can't do it. So, we go through this process of what I call prioritized code compliance. So, what are the most important things on any given project? Sometimes, the thing that rises to the top initially is anything that we need to do on the site to mitigate concerns of neighbors. At the staff level, we kind of are getting pretty good at predicting this. Elizabeth's a little bit better at it than I am because she has four or five more years of experience with the Planning and Zoning Commission and knowing some of the issues that residents in the past have brought up with particular types of projects. We also try to address concerns that we know are repeat customers of our Planning and Zoning Commission or our council. Our Planning and Zoning Commission oftentimes talks about making sure that, when we can, that the refuse areas are screened and landscaped if possible. Sometimes, we try to, well, we need to or try to address public infrastructure deficiencies. Again, this sometimes rises to a must-have. If the water system is underserved for the new project that's going in, we need to make that improvement. We do always look at adjoining public rights away to see whether streets, curbs, sidewalks, landscaping is also up to par. Again, looking to address some of those ideals outlined in our comprehensive plan, which is the next item that's listed. So, again, comprehensive plan doesn't always give very specific things that need to be done. They're sometimes more in the form of policies, like improving pedestrian opportunities or providing sound mitigation or looking for opportunities to create gateways into our main areas like our downtown. And then, on the bigger projects, we do try to achieve code compliance. My little phone over there is jiggling, so that's the ring. So, this, those first three are the things that we never have trouble when we're dealing with the developers, convincing them that it makes sense to do that. Sometimes, on those last couple of items with the comprehensive plan goals or achieving code compliance, if they don't understand those, you know, sometimes they'll just leave and maybe call one of you and have a conversation about the concerns of, "Why do I need to do this?" And so, again, this is a reason for kind of going through this with you to help you understand what our process is and the documents that guide it. So, this is going to go through, again, those steps that we kind of very detailed go through with each applicant. An introductory meeting occurs, whether it's by a phone call or sometimes people will stop in. And during that time, we're usually asking for some site planning information to get us started and allow us an opportunity to look at something and be able to provide feedback. That usually results in their site plan submittal. I was telling Rob earlier today, I've worked in a lot of different communities over 35 years, and, you know, some communities, they go for total code compliance all the time and they have application requirements that they won't... and they have application requirements that they won't, staff won't look at it until you get a site plan, a landscape plan, a plat of survey, you know, a lot of documents that cost a lot of money for our applicants to pay to consultants. What I've found over time with, with communities like Rolling Meadows where we were trying to be a little bit more progressive and business friendly is, let's focus on the site plan. Let's make sure that works first so that if we do have comments in that preliminary engineering review that we do, this multidisciplinary review, that we can have you make those changes to that one document without having to change 12 other documents. We provide that multidisciplinary review from our planning staff, our engineering staff. Sometimes our fire department gets involved in projects, our building code officials will get involved. And we try to turn that around within one to three weeks. Again, that timing can vary depending on the time of year and how many projects we have at any given time. And a larger project that's more complex will obviously take additional time. This next step, then, so once we give them that submittal, it's very detailed. It will say everything that we need to have, kind of our got to haves, some of our wishes. And we know that sometimes they're going to come back with responses that say, we can do this, we can do this, we can't do that. That response, again, because they're employing contractors and various people, can sometimes take weeks or months or even longer. But sometimes the, you know, the people that might be talking to you aren't, may not necessarily be aware of what their consultants are doing. So, you know, we may be talking back and forth with a consultant and working fine, but the owner of the project may be waiting and waiting and thinking it's the cities that's slowing their project down and actually we're all working on it very nicely together. So once we do get that project or that resubmittal back, we'll go through a quick confirmation of the details that we provided them. And if everything is in order, then we will schedule the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, which from the time they give us that completed application can be 15 to 30 days out. Remember, our PCC meets once a month on the first Tuesday, so depending on when they submit it, statutorily, we're required to provide at least 15 days and not more than 30 days notice to surrounding property owners and pursuant to our code requirements. Why do we do all this? Our goal in trying to get a project as clean as possible is so that when it gets to the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's no questions. If we can give the PCC a project that looks good, addresses their issues, has no questions, they can finish their public hearing, open and close the public hearing, and do a consideration of that project in one meeting. If we don't answer those questions, or there are questions, or, you know, things we haven't thought about, or, you know, the developer says, I didn't like that idea, so I didn't do that, but PCC says that's important, that one continuance at a Planning and Zoning Commission costs a whole month. So, you know, again, our goal is to try and get them through one Planning and Zoning Commission with a positive recommendation. And ultimately, our real goal is a unanimous positive recommendation. Because I don't think in even the three years that I've been here that if we've had positive recommendations from the PCC, typically the council follows suit pretty well. There are exceptions, there will always be exceptions, and we kind of always know what those things are going to be. And in those cases, we're probably already reaching out to the manager, the mayor, or maybe an affected ward council person for some feedback on those. And then of course, after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, any case has to go for final approval before council at two separate readings. Just kind of an FYI, I know we were talking about entitlement and zoning, but sometimes developers get to this point and they're like, I really want to, you know, can I start building the day after I get my approval? I'm like, well, now you have to go to building permits. So a lot of what we've done recently is advise applicants that if they want, at their own risk, after first reading, we can accept the permit application and get that process started. Because again, they're going to need a couple of weeks to take a look at permits and get going. So, kind of talked through our process, looked at our, what we have and what we want and how we're going to get it. We, at the staff level, already have a pretty good idea of what properties are available, where our focus is going to be. Many cases, we've dreamed about things that will be developed on particular sites and have a list of things that are important already. It changes depending on what gets submitted. But you can kind of, and our comprehensive plan bears this out. Our older section of town along Kirchhoff Road is characterized by the smaller parcels, mom and pop, you know, that has a whole different set of goals and criteria than some of the more corporate settings that we have on the south side of town in our triangles and our more corridor commercial areas. We have some good things happening in both of those areas as well. And then we have our western part of town, which, you know, we often talk about all the exciting things happening in Alderman McHale's Ward, and not because of their commercial or development, just a little bit more difficult issues. And sometimes there are issues that they impact our residents and we want to pay attention to them, but they're not in our jurisdiction. So the big green spot right in the middle of that plan is in Schaumburg and proposed for potential redevelopment in the near future, Lober Farms. And so we get involved or are asked to comment on those projects from planners and officials in the adjoining communities. So at the appropriate time and in the process, we would, you know, try to solicit feedback on those, both from you and from adjoining residents as well. So that concludes the remarks that I have for tonight. I'm very happy to take questions or hear feedback tonight, any other time. You know, I welcome your questions. If you do get calls and you want to have a conversation about a specific case, by all means, give me a call anytime.
Thank you, Joelle. Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments? Alderman Benizial?
Yeah, thank you. So I've actually had a couple of residents ask this question. How do we go about directing new incoming potential businesses on finding the appropriate locations? One of the comments that I seem to get quite often is, we are heavily saturated with Hispanic cultured foods. And they seem to be in clusters. And so the question that I've been asked quite a few times is, well, can we spread them out? You know, so in our comprehensive plan or when they kind of come to you guys for planning, how do we deal with situations like that? Kind of diversifying more.
Rob may have something to add to this, but I'll start. From, there's a couple of answers. I think in some cases, if they are looking at a piece of property that they have a right to be entitled to without zoning, there's very little we can do. So if they meet zoning and they come in and they apply, we can't, you know, we can't say no. It's, they're meeting the code, there's requirements. If, if there are entitlements that are in play, especially if it is a special use, and we have a number of those projects that are like that, the purpose of a special use is to look at, is to treat it as a permitted use, but to look at whether it's appropriate in that specific location. And I guess potentially that could be defined by policy or, you know, review. But it probably would be very difficult to go to that level. We can advise people, you know, if they call us first and say, we're looking for a location, then Martha Corner, our business advocate, deals with those folks pretty frequently and can utilize her knowledge to, you know, suggest most of them, but then maybe, you know, hopefully steer them in an area where we may want to have it spread out a little bit more.
If I could piggyback on that a little bit. One of the comments that sometimes we tend to hear, and I'm sure many of you have seen on social media, is why did the city put X business into this site? And I think an important thing to note is that the city doesn't really control what a private property owner's leases or where a business chooses to locate. Through zoning, we can control the types of businesses that are desired or will locate in specific commercial sectors or sections of the community. But by and large, it's the private property owners who are in charge of the leasing process. And as mentioned by my assistant director, Charlton, there's certain ways that we can go about regulating certain businesses. So the council recently gave direction to send an item related to special uses for tobacco-type uses back to the PCC for further analysis. So there are certain ways to create limitations on a specific use. Oftentimes, for certain businesses like a restaurant, you really don't necessarily, it'd be challenging to get into the specific types of food categories. And oftentimes, a restaurant will be a permitted use in an area, and then it is with the private property owners to then work through the leasing or a restaurant to purchase and open up in that location.
Thank you. Then my second question that I get quite often, especially for our ward, is what, what abilities do we have as a city to work with property owners in moving their properties forward? Meaning, for instance, I'll use the example, we all know the former Taco Bell on the corner of Kirchhoff. I know in my ward, I got lots of residents saying, like, what's going on? It's abandoned, why won't they sell? Why won't they, you know, we, I think we all have some of those buildings in our wards. And so I know I've referred those residents, you know, to you guys, but I think it would be good, since, you know, this is kind of on that topic, is what do we, as a city, what can we do and what do we do?
Absolutely. It's a great question, and it touches heavily on what our economic development approaches are. Currently, the city has a variety of, for instance, incentive programs. So we recently had a conversation and evaluated retail and restaurant incentive programs. And so that's one mechanism that we can use to attract desirable businesses into the community. In the business development manager's role, so Martha Corner's role, her objective is oftentimes to go out and identify what are some of the trendier types of businesses and what kind of businesses do we want to see in certain areas of the community. And that also involves her having conversations with those commercial property owners on what kind of rent structures does that private property look like. Oftentimes, we bring the two parties together and then given that we are, the government, we don't really participate in that lease negotiation process. There are certain times in larger redevelopments, similar to what we're working with on the Sam's Club property, for instance, where the county has certain incentive programs where we will help facilitate and be involved actively to try to bring that project to fruition because the bottom line or the way that the costs to make that project come together require that the pro forma meets the dollar amounts that the lenders are looking for in order to provide funding for either the development or a business that would like to build out. So one of the things we're looking at into 2023 is working with the Economic Development Committee to create a business development strategic plan that identifies what are some of the strategic goals that we would like to see within the different business corridors of our community? What kind of businesses do we want to see in town? That involves community input, the council's input, staff input, and ultimately, and the business and commercial property owners' input. And ultimately, that will help guide us as we continue to pursue the types of businesses, restaurant, retail, service businesses that we would like to see ideally locate in the community. So we're pretty aggressive in our approach. We're always welcome to anyone who has seen a restaurant, a business that you've loved somewhere in another community that you think would do great in Meadows. Certainly send that along to us in the city manager's office and we'll follow up with the site selectors from that business, or if it's a small amount and pop, we'll actually pay them a visit. And then we'll work with and identify some locations here in town and see if we can help facilitate a lease or purchase and sale agreement to ultimately happen in a business to open.
And to follow up at that, because I've had many conversations with managers, Tabo and Assistant Director Charlton, that the city really does not have any legal grounds to force a owner to sell their property or lease their property. Like I said, I've had many conversations, you know, with the, you know, about the owners with Taco Bell, for instance, or former Taco Bell. We can only facilitate those conversations, as frustrating as it is, you know, for residents. But there's not much that we can do other than making sure that they're, you know, doing, you know, abiding by ordinances and codes and whatnot, but there's not much more than that that we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Joelle, and thank you for sharing the process and highlighting some of the aspects that you go through on your daily endeavors down in that department.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks. Well, if there aren't any further comments or questions on that topic, that ends all three items for agenda, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Budmath with the first, Alderman O'Brien with the second, and then let's have all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned at 8:51. Have a good evening.